Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get the meeting started. We're going to start off with the invocation of Miss Dan. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father in heaven, we thank you so much for today, for bringing all of us here together to discuss the issues and the business of our city, Lord. We just pray that you will bless and protect each one of us on our way out of here and through this meeting, that we will be able to make the decisions that are necessary and correct for our city, Lord. All these things we ask in Jesus' name, amen. You're a little behind us.
We didn't stand back.
Okay, the full council is in attendance for the roll call. And also, we don't have any attorneys present today. Jay was not able to make it. He had a town on business. And Tony has been ill with COVID, so he has to be away. So we appreciate that. But he is here to help guide us if we need some assistance. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the agenda approval. And before we do that, I need to make one change. And I wanted to go ahead and preface this with something. I don't make the changes ahead of time because I want everybody to know after it's been published what that change is. So that there's no wondering why, where did this go? So we are going to remove under new business, number one, Southern Sanitation Contractual Services. We're taking that off of today's agenda. And that will be brought to the next work session. With that being said, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda. Remove. Oh, I'm sorry. With the removal of item one under new business.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? I see no discussion. All in favor? Going back to the consent agenda? And if there are any?
I would like to talk about the financials. I have some questions.
Do we do that once we get into the discussion area?
It says brief.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes. Looking at, there's an item one, thirty-nine point two thousand, proceeds of sales of product income. What are we selling?
We don't know.
We got six thousand dollars. What did we sell?
We didn't sell anything. That is in the wrong location. We have some training coming in tomorrow.
Where does it go?
If.
Go ahead.
Actually, we're not going to have this discussion right now.
Okay.
If you'd like to remove the.
Let me do this, because I've got some other thing.
Well, there's already a motion on there to approve. And there's been a second for that motion. I would like to just gently remind council that if there's questions about these things, we should be discussing these ahead of the meeting and making those changes so that we can put that out in the meeting. At these meetings, these are the times for having a vote, minor discussions, not going over things. As we are looking at the financials, what we are voting on approving is that you have received the financials. Okay? So, with that being said, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any other discussion about that?
I do have a question because I did send in the change to the minute.
Okay.
Where we approved the mileage rate. And I want to know if the court changed that to include some of the last I missed out. But, so I have not changed that. So what I'll do is I will now send it out to you guys and then. I hope that we would need to pull that ones from the twenty-fifth. Is that the twenty-fifth when we did the knowledge?
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we need to amend the motion?
I will amend my motion. I will approve the consent agenda. That please remove July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four minutes and the financials.
Is there any other discussion?
I will recite that motion.
And then just that. All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with the removal of the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four minutes? Please raise your hand. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. The committee report, I know you haven't had a meeting, but would you let us know when the next meeting is, if you have that date?
Oh, I'm sorry. One second. Sorry. We're doing one this quarter now.
It may not have been set because.
It's on our calendar. Yes, October twenty-eighth at seven P M. In this building.
Thank you. Is there anything else? No, not this time. Okay. We'll move on to the planning and zoning commission. And Mr. Walter, do you have anything for us?
Quickly, Mayor and council, I know we've got a busy agenda. I wanted just to update you on a couple items. Just to refresh your memories that the W G R Z twenty-four oh two, that's the A N S Volta Investments, Mr. Schellman's case, that will be heard by the planning commission next Wednesday, eight fourteen, five thirty. And I believe there is a council meeting right after that, since to consider and act on that if council refuses. And I will be in attendance for that. And also W G R C twenty-four oh three, which is for Park and. Resoning, that will be heard by planning commission on eight fifteen. That meeting was advertised. And I am sure that we will work together to get it for them. And then that will be discussed at the following subsequent work, council work session, which is the twenty-ninth. And I would also let council know that I would be not be able to attend that. I'm scheduled to go to the Mayor's Leadership Academy in Athens.
Great.
So. So I will do my best to get a good report and think after, if there's something that the administration needs to mention, that will also be heard by council at your September the twelfth, council meeting. So those are the current zoning cases that you all have. And then also W G R Z twenty-four oh one, which we will discuss shortly. We have just issued comments today for Stonehaven subdivision over off Cannon Farm Road, which is the line owns this piece that the council issued to Suevarian Zone. So they're in the process of getting approved. And then I had a request today from Mr. Coleman's engineer on I plays the dial form commercial track two to the data turned everything in. They would like for me to issue the ready for permits later, which I have drafted. I've also explained to them that in the past council has said that they would like to see the drawing for you all for issuance of a permit. I'll reiterate that, that I'll send the letter, normally I send a letter to the city, so they've met all the conditions for permit. They've gotten all the approvals and here's what they sent for the land purpose permit fees, which I can do that. But I can also put in that letter that, because it was normally it's issued to you all. So they've made the conditions, but I can also let them know that unless I hear differently from you all, that you want them to bring those drawings up here and present them. And this is the site plan activities zones. And just to be clear, this is just, they're requesting permission to obtain a permit of the land service. Is all they're requesting.
Okay.
So I will do that. I'll get that out. And then I know that there are other things on y'all's agenda that you're looking as far as building exteriors. And we talked about that in the last work session. We could provide assistance. I'm trying to streamline that if you all like, but that's currently current activity.
Thank you, Jeff. There were no leeways.
No. Those drawings that you were just speaking about.
Yes.
That's the draw that council is, that's not the same drawings as on our agenda tonight.
No, those are the, what I heard a couple months ago was that councils to know what's going on with
Right.
civil cycling. Grading drainage utilities. When we get a new submit on, we'll try to get those, go ahead and get those ahead during the process instead of after the process. But this is something that the current council is requesting. So this will just be a chance for them to show you what they propose to do on track two. Now, they also are bound by the same zoning conditions, Mayor and council, that you all are discussing on. That's track four of the buildings that you all have been looking at. So I'm under the impression that if that gets some resolution, only y'all are pleased with the proposed exteriors, that those same, those same style will apply to any future buildings. I think that was the, what I heard coming out of the. But you still, based on the zone, you still need to consider each track separately unless you all tell, you know, decide differently. Because if you want to see the site plans, this will be a good opportunity in a work session where you can ask a lot of questions and get to them.
Thank you, Claire.
Sure. Let me ask you a question, Joe. Thank you. You have had a lot of years of experience with this. And I am not past the point of being able to say, I need to have some advice on this. I'd like to ask this question. If there's no sewer capacity and there's no chance of having sewer capacity for another two years, is it accepted practice that the council goes ahead and gives the land permit? So then there's disturbance and so there's two years of nothing there? Or is that just up to each city? Just based on your experience with everything that you've done?
Well, that's a good question, Mayor. The the currently in the land development ordinance, there's, there are, you meet certain conditions and you obtain a permit. Well, I realize that a lot of this is tied to, if this needs sewer, then it really can't do anything.
Right.
There are jurisdictions that would do, and I sort of referred to Mr. Powell's advice as well, that would do a moratorium on issuing permits until something happens. So the town could consider a moratorium on permits in the sewer district to them until the, on any sort of permit, or you could tailor it to land service for building. Because he could, if they were to go in and do the development, put the infrastructure in, leave it like it is, stabilize it, it would basically be curbing gutter, parking lot, and a place for a building. So if that's not what the council wants to see for a couple of years, then you can do that. But you just have to, you have to tailor it such a way that you're not totally restricting development. Like Stonehaven, which will be on county order, but not on sewer.
Right.
Or Mr. Schellman's piece, which I believe is outside the sewer connection requirement.
Right.
Those could still be, so it may be that we have to figure out how you want to tailor that request and then act upon that request so that you're not totally stopping somebody that was a house burn and unfortunately or somewhere and they want to rebuild, but they couldn't rebuild. But yes, it's, I mean, the local government's have a lot of ability to, because that's a great sort of function that you all do. This, we would be helpful to have some sort of document policy to back that up as to why we could, you know, why we would say, no, you can't issue a permit.
Thank you. You have many years of experience, a lot more than I do in this business, and I just, I appreciate your candor and letting me know that. And thank y'all for knowing about those objects are.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure how the sound is, but let me know if there's a problem. The there are two, there's sort of two independent things, zoning and wastewater management. And Joe will remember and has been a part of a lot of development that has occurred during periods when sewer moratoriums were in place. And that's a little bit of a developer at your risk decision making. And I think from the city standpoint, the key ingredient is to, is to be able to truthfully describe at the time of zoning, when all of that is occurring, what the, what the limitations are on sewer availability. I mean, and probably with some precision that gets disclosed in writing so that there's no confusion when people make their decisions about moving ahead. So that you get a sort of a picture of how that can work is a lot of developers in Gwinnett, when sewer was not available, either contributed to create pump stations that made it available, or in alternatives, they use some systems that would hold the affluent until it could be transported away. So, so there's a lot of alternatives for developers. And I think the city's duty when it comes to wastewater availability is just to communicate it with precision, what's available and what's not available.
Tony, in those situations, kind of what Joe had described about getting a land clearing, you know, land clearing permit and then building the infrastructure of the area and then having an empty parking lot and a space for a building. As you go into Loganville, there's been a building that, or a building that was started many years ago. Now it's all overgrown, weeds everywhere. And I guess that could be worked through with putting in some kind of a maintenance agreement that they have to keep it up. But I think that's what we're trying to prevent from happening here.
And, and those are, you know, once you sign up for a building permit and start the process, you are required to move forward in a diligent manner to complete the whole building. It's not, there's a time limit normally on a permit that it has to be completed within that time period. It's, it's not normally done in phases where part of it's completed and part of it's just remaining. That's not usually an option for developers. The risk choice is build the whole thing in its finished capacity and make alternatives for sewer, or don't start. Those are the, those are usually the alternatives for them.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. We're going to go ahead and move forward to the library report with Ms. Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
I'm happy to be here. I'm especially happy to be here because we got a pressure washing done last month. And we got a new roof put on this past weekend, which looks amazing. They were the most hardworking men and possibly women I've ever seen in my life. I'm thrilled with the work they did and especially the fact that the library did not have to close for two out of the three days and the third day we're normally closed, which is Sunday. To see them work so hard, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday with no disruption at all to the library. Most people now work with headphones in, so I don't even think the sound of the roof, it didn't bother me working at all. So.
Good.
I wanted to express my sincere gratitude. It's so nice to see the progress they made.
You're welcome.
Also, if you can get their contact information to me and you can email it to me, I would like to award that to Clay Smith, who is our facilities manager for the region, because we have a lot of library projects coming up. And I'm sure he's already told me he would love to have their information. And I'm also so excited about our Little Free Library that with the ribbon cutting ceremony tonight and the opening and start of that, I am more than happy to donate books to Little Free Libraries. So please email me or call me anytime that you see that it is free stocked. I'm happy to keep books in stock there as well as at all of the other Little Free Libraries in Walton County. We supply all of those books. So we're, we're happy to do that. And that's through Andrea Raphael. She comes to the library, picks up the books, and we stock all of those libraries. And that is due to the generosity of our community who provides us with the books to do it. So we never turn away donations as long as they're in good condition and we make sure that those books go to whoever needs them. Also, I have great news about wrapping up our summer reading program in July. Participants of the summer reading program just for one month read twenty-three hundred and eighteen books, which contributed more like to over three hundred free books given away as prizes. Again, all of those are donated, so at no cost to the taxpayers. So we're still giving away free books even though the program technically ended. I just want to keep rewarding especially children, but adults as well, who are turning in their reading logs. They're still getting prizes. And I'm starting to collect books for next summer. It takes about a year to get all those books together. So as soon as it ends, we're starting again. Also, with, I have the calendars for August and September. They're a little bit lighter because we did just hire three new team members at the library. They just started training. They're all doing great. They are all very young. One of them, this is her first job. So please be patient while they're learning all the policies and procedures and how to do their job. It's a lot more than most people realize. So I appreciate your patience. We have two brand new performers booked for October to keep the kids busy during fall break. So we have a brand new rep college that is coming. And we also booked the brand new Mr. and Mrs. Claus, who are coming for the tree lighting in November. They are going to do a special pirate story time for the students in October during fall break. So I'm really excited about that. And I hope it's okay with you, but they asked if it was raining during the tree lighting, if they could use the library as a backup location. And I said, we're open, the library is open during that. So is it okay with you if we offer the library to them in case it's raining?
As long as we can all, yeah.
And we normally have crafts for the children. People can check out books, prepare books, and get new library cards during the tree lighting. Yeah. So I think that's enough. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I have a comment.
Sure.
Whenever I come in there, the ladies at the front desk are always so kind and so friendly. Your enthusiasm has broke off on me and really very, very nice environment.
I have two criteria with my team members, which is excellent customer service. I let the new employees know that if you're doing the minimum, that's not good enough for wallet growth. Our patrons are exceptional and they should receive exceptional service. So thank you. But I think that should be the standard.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you can tell that is Dan's.
Okay, we are going to move on to any kind of public comment. If anybody has anything to share or add or ask or state or. Nobody. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to old business. Matt Bradlich and Chris, I'm sure is going to be the one who is presenting. Is that right? Come up if you're ready.
Well, I am going to go ahead and recuse myself from the conversation. And you can call me that.
Make sure my gadget works. All right. Well, I'll orient you guys first thing. So this is the survey plot we've got for the project. The track, now it's not going to work with the TV screen, the laser pointer's not. So the track that's below is the request. The sixteen point two one acres is track A on the survey plat. And I think the last time I was here, I'll orient you again, we had it was asked for me to show a plan that shows both the developments together. That's the office in the rear. Then our front, so you can kind of see this is the water and road parkway roundabout. Right now, there isn't a road here, which is in there. So we're on the north side of the roundabout. And that electric there was asked for last time I was here to show both tracks together. So, thank you, Chris. You're quite welcome. Okay. I'm going to go back to this because this kind of illustrates what my team put together to showcase the quality that we're looking at, architecture. We wanted to really provide you guys with the details of this project. And it helps to bring on the talented architect and my landscape architects and me as the planner that laid this out. And what we wanted to bring to you guys is as much quality of the concept of the design as we can. Now, I will say what we're requesting tonight is an apartment. I mean, this is conceptual. This is, this is changing this from agricultural to above. And that's all it's going to be. And you guys will see this again when we pull each building permit in the future, even if it's two years down the road. You'll also see the L D P come through here as well. L D P, what we're required is to have a super plan. Now, we've got to have a design if there's not a capacity. If there isn't a more room, I don't think Matt would take the risk of even us engineering instead of simple plans unless there's some capacity available. There are a lot of risky problems if you try to do something and build these buildings with millions of dollars and then all of a sudden they just sit there officially without sewer capacity. And I think that's a risk that he's not willing to take. But what he would like to do is, is to showcase the quality of the design. This is something that he's very, very excited about. He's hired some of the, like I said, a good team that has brought out, I think, a very good design. So the design itself is heavily emphasized on pedestrian connectivity throughout the outdoor spaces. And we purposely had lanes of pedestrian traffic through here, but also defined with different paper covers. And I've got those details in your packet. So we don't want to see parking, but we want to kind of surround the buildings. And the central plaza area is the major gathering place, although in the floor and beach of these buildings, there's going to be enough rooms to put outdoor tables, restaurants. And if you walk through them, showcase some of your retail wares. They're the place to do outdoor, you know, showcasing your craft shop or something like that. I also want some of the buildings that's kind of neat on the ends of this building here, on each side is, it's balcony because of the way the grade works. Right? Able to have a walkout balcony and that could be a restaurant from each of the quarters. So this will be retail office on these two buildings here and here. Then we have the opportunity on the buildings that surround the plaza and to have some four units distributed through the five buildings, channels above. And also in the pack, we have some general floor plans that show how they stack, how the big ones around the corner. And then if we have different sizes to appease different types of the market for square footages and number of bedrooms. Building A is a twenty-four thousand square foot multipurpose building, anchor, retail, maybe a restaurant. It's at thirty-two foot high. Building B has a residential component to it, eight thousand four hundred square feet. Restaurant, retail, office, residential. That one is two stories. Building C is thirteen thousand two hundred square feet, bottom floors, retail office. And that's a three-story building. It will have eleven units set at twenty-four hundred square feet, three bedrooms. And building D is ten thousand eight hundred square feet, this bottom, retail with residential above. It's another three stories that'll have nine units, thirty-four thousand square feet, three bedrooms. Building E, seven thousand two hundred square feet, two stories, it'll have six units, three bedrooms, two thousand four hundred square feet. And then building F, G as well. Those will have the seven units of the twelve thousand two bedroom units. And then building G makes office retail, two story with a half basement, and that's the two-story with a half basement, and that's the 42, that's the basement. My total retail floor area is 8,800. While residential is 40 units, set 79,200. And the retail density is 5,490 square feet per acre. And residential is a median density of 2,500 units per acre. So some of the facts from what we're proposing with these seven buildings, pedestrian orientation. I just wanted to give some elevations. It's here in the lower detail. We want on the buildings themselves. So Matt has a vision to have these operate. So we've done a pretty good job, I think, on a good elevation here. For example, the bottom of the top floor would be a mixture of different types of materials to break it up. And having the type of architecture that has interest in each of the columns. So they'll all look similar. I think the final building is going to be this here. And you can see the difference. So you do at least, like I said, we understand. I have a group of waste order management engineers working on a report. It's going to be similar to what a traffic engineer will provide for a traffic report. They're going into a hollow details, just not just an analysis, they're going to actually provide. I think something that could help the city, we'll share that with you guys. It helps Matt understand what the demands are, but it'll help you guys also in the long term, not just this project, but what this project's impact would be on what's happening in the next two years. It's just not ready yet, so I wanted to let you know that we have, Matt has paid for that. So he's taking that issue serious. Storm warning management's going to be underground. So there won't be an above-ground detention, so Matt has decided for us to look at doing an underground pipe system, so it won't be above ground. It's best way to utilize the space we can. We talked to, had some communication with Walton Parks and the F T as well. So this this isn't the ideal location for a connection for particular fact they probably don't want. So my idea on this is provide them an easement up to the property line for a pedestrian multi-mode bridge or something like that. We'll plant and record easement. What I'll probably do is just round this out. So this becomes access to the offices here, and then you have an entrance into the retail there. Instead of this being, I'd have a public road, which would be more metroly, with the ability to connect golf carts, bicycles, pedestrians, and to the future park there since they didn't want to be in access there, so. We are, there's nothing that the conditions of something that we disagree with. I think you've done a good job on projecting. We're going to have to do a development agreement with the city. We're going to have to provide some restricted permits. And a lot of the things, like I said, will come back to you guys. But we would like to secure the entitlement of Maggiore to a P U D. And I really don't, as much as I like you guys, I would like to do just to have them done, but you'll see me again, but we'll come back here and be some site manager. The architect will be here to show you the building permits. And then if nothing matches, if something on the LDP doesn't match the site plan, then it's not good, right? So this is site plan specific. And if the architecture doesn't look like what armor for finally the elevations, then we'll probably have to go back for a change of conditions or something. So land use and permitting are two separate things. Don't think Matt will take the risk on doing engineering and start installing it. He doesn't have secured sewer, so. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Would you like to have?
One for the number seven that Joe outlined. Developer to pay development, industry expansion phase, and for a group, demand does not exceed 11,000. G P D, G P D. Is that still accurate, or?
I would like to say, okay. When I did the original sewer analysis, I was really liberal on my square footage. And it was a lot higher than what it is. And that's why I've got these guys doing the analysis. I would say that's not an unreasonable request. Like that's, you know, restaurants take a little bit for one because they have restaurants. So you start to look at your ability to have more restaurants. And I think that's reasonable. I would like to say if there's anything that comes out of this report that says something different, I'll come back in front of you guys and ask for a change of conditions. All right, if it looks like that's not enough, then we can come back and put it to you guys. And I'll share that report regardless. You know, I'll give it to you at the end of the time to tell everybody. I think it's going to come within the next week or so. Wish it would have been here tonight.
Two phases? You guys are looking at two phases or three phases? What are you looking at?
Well, I guess it's three phases, right, man? Two, okay. And the years that I have in my report here probably aren't solid enough, right? And so it's going to be maybe the same timeframe that I had in my write-up, which had the big construction early summer at 2:25 for the first one. And then the final stages of construction is the town center, the center part of the, to be late summer fall 22nd. But I think a two-year period, whenever we can have sewer. So if that goes two years out, then there'll be two years after that before it's finished. You know, I'd like to answer any questions that you have.
I have a couple of questions. And looking at this, let me see if I understand correctly. The building C and D, are those the two that would be the three stories?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so most of the walkway and the creative spaces. What would be considered like the front of the retail space in that drawing? Is it the part that goes to the walkway?
Everything on the, everything on the bottom floor is going to be an interest to a retail or an office use. So if you look at this rendering.
Okay, so would you consider that the front of your building then?
It could be both. I think you would want some kind of, if I was a restaurant, I'd like to have a presence up and maybe back here where it's outdoor dining, and maybe that's what you're making the trust. But I don't think it's a mad idea to have some of these. Now, retail, you don't want to have two ways or one way in and out, or front and back. But I think for the restaurant, you would probably have two fronts.
Okay, and with that in mind, where are we looking at deliveries? Where are we looking at garbage receptacles or that sort of thing?
I have some places. We were talking about parking last time I was here. I have some places that I've dealt in for deliveries and and dumpster receptacles. These areas that are in the back of some of these buildings here. But I would have to play around with parking and probably use some of this overflow parking on there. But I have built in these these areas here, here, and here that are kind of hidden away at the surface all out.
Or I can turn it down. They're parking out here, and then I have to walk past a dumpster to get to my restaurant.
Yeah, they're going to have to roll it out on some of this stuff because I wouldn't want these three buildings, which are, may not have a lot of restaurants. I think you're going to find that these two here and here will be where your restaurants go. But if you're just an office use, you know, or cleaning with a big trash out, but yes, restaurants do have a presence. What I'd like to do is when I get into the LDP, I've built in spaces that maybe reduce parking a little bit. But I've absolutely got here in this office development to use for overflow. But I did purposely design these little L shapes.
But there's really not access to those at this time into that for the for a truck to come with the delivery, for instance. I mean, even retail spaces and office spaces use some pretty good sized trucks.
Well, we're delivering this area here, then up here, since this is going to be more metroly now. I could probably take this and move it down and have a dot in for a delivery truck. And then here as well, take these three parking spaces out. It's a good place for a truck to come. And then you've got access to delivery here, and then they still could make this turn.
Matt, do you know anything else for this? Joe, could you help us out with something?
Sure.
Tonight, we are approving or not approving the rezone for the PUD. There will be time, because these are all very good points. But there will be time when they come with site plans to discuss that and make sure those things are in place and the flow is good. And all of these things are covered. Is that accurate?
That is an accurate statement. Essentially, what councilmen requested to do is to approve the concept. But because it's such a different thing than just you normally see.
Yeah.
We put a lot of things in there to try to guide them and corral, may not be the best word, but try to guide and direct so you know what you're on and what you're going to get. But yes, the details that, and those are all good questions, would be normally taken part in the, after the, if the zoning is approved in the design part, and you could also have them come back for or any, the other P U D's been approved for some periodic progress, maybe if you wanted, during to kind of talk about those things. But yes, generally, those are all the information that's been brought up, loading, parking, dumpster screening, all that's in your ordinance is now part of what you get somebody else to do, to look at all that and then make sure they control it, just like with utilities. But realistically, the city would also have the ability to wait to grant permit until all those questions were answered and permitted such that you can get all that done. But yes, the good news is you are, but you will also, if you choose to take an action, you want to make sure that it's understood from the developer's standpoint that they have to do all this and come, which is what the development agreement and the conditions are, so that they don't just go, because they want to know what what they would be, what they're designed to.
Right.
If that helps.
If that's not.
Not as if it's a city's own list, and I have it. Because too much of that has happened in the past, and then future groups are left working with those situations, and it's easier to take care of these issues at the front than it is afterwards.
So I have one other question, and maybe more for Joe or for Tony. And that would be in approving the PUD, we are approving that we agreed to the three-story buildings. Is that correct, or can we modify that? Where, I don't necessarily want to limit it to two, but I will counsel to have the option that when we, once we get some more planning in place and what Walton Road wants, and then you come back with a design plan for the buildings, that we're not tied into that if that's not what we want. And if there's maybe something we could put in that, that would help me a lot, because I'm having a little bit of trouble with the three stories.
Well, I'd say you're right. Building C and D are the 42-foot tall three-story buildings. If it makes you feel better, we can match that to 30-foot two stories. We're probably going to be dropping, that will probably drop some of the residential unit. And the overall square footage of the development south will drop some. But I'm getting less mad. We have an objection to that. If we come back and we feel strongly about having three stories for these two, we'll come back in front of you with a change of conditions request, and maybe I could put more on into the three-story works, because you get those bigger 3, 400 square foot residential.
And I guess, I do totally get that. I'm trying to listen to the residents, and I admit, I have to talk to a ton of residents, you know? And I would like the opportunity for us as council to talk to more residents to make sure we're bringing them what they want. And that's why I would like for flexibility for both you and us.
Well, if you put a condition from the 42-foot building to 30-foot, that's two stories. You could do that through a condition. And then what I would like to do is maybe bring some more architecture to show you what the scale, the differences between the two-story and three-story or a human scale. This drawing may not do as good of a job as it could. The elevations kind of do, but maybe in harbor you can do something more isometric. And so you can see that. We would accept that condition to reduce those two to 30 foots, two stories only.
I mean, Larry Martin might even have something to say about that.
I don't necessarily want to limit it. Also, when we approve, if we approve for the PUD rezone with three stories, then we're kind of committed to that. So I was wondering if we could put flexibility in that until we have a bathroom, I think.
We would be able to that, and then you get it referred again, to be honest with you.
Anything else, guys? Okay, with that being said, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thank you. It's your third time. I think it's your
I love you guys.
And we appreciate your patience. You can come anytime in your life. So on the, is there a motion? I'll offer a motion on the PUD application, W G R Z 24-01, to rezone from A to A PUD. Is there a motion?
Oh, yes.
Oh, you make that motion. Is there a second?
Do we need in the motion the
Yes, you do.
Okay.
All right. I'll make the motion that we approve Matt Breddlich's PUD application, W G R Z dash 24 dash 01, with the following conditional changes to reduce the third story from 42 to 32, from 32 to 30-foot two-story from three-story. Is there a second?
Is that not alerted?
I will second. Any discussion?
I may ask for clarity sake, if you would ask the council to amend the motion to include the, well, this room, the planning committee recommending conditions with that one modification, because the planning commission sent that to you with those. If we don't have that in there, then there's greater, if you don't mind. That way, they go with the case, okay, whether from then on, if there's positive or negative.
But I will amend my previous motion to approve Matt Breddlich's PUD application, W G R Z dash 24 dash 01, that can in this residency with the recommendations from planning commission with the following change, condition, the following condition for the three-story buildings at 32-foot to be reduced to 30-foot two-story. Second.
Mayor. Before there's a vote on that, it is, and it's hard for me to tell this, not being in the room, but has there been an opportunity for anybody opposed to speak on the proposed planning?
No.
It'd probably be a good idea to ask and give an opportunity if there's anybody opposed to it to speak before it gets voted on.
Thank you, Tony. Is there anybody who is opposed to this rezone? And would like to speak about it? Nobody is opposed, Tony.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just for the record, for Tony's benefit, the public hearing was held by the planning commission, and there was no opposition. That's that one. Just, there was, but Tony is correct. We always have to ask.
Thank you. After 2,000. Okay. There's been a motion. There has been a second. All those in favor of rezoning the PUD application, please raise your hand. It has been. Thank you very much, council. And thank you for your patience. We appreciate it. Tony, we're going to go on the enclave to our architecture design and the revision to the approved drawings.
Hello.
Hello, are you coming?
Yeah.
Okay. Here we are again, Billy.
Yes, thank you for having us back tonight to take a look at this, hopefully we can get this approved, this moved forward. Based on the comments from the floor session, we went back and revised the drawing to match the actual monument that said for roundabout at the entrance of the enclave, the down hall. And as Joe mentioned earlier, this is the, the prototype that we would like to have approved for all of the flats there. So this would be, you know, architectural approval for every building that was built for the BUD, which is what my understanding was we had prior, uh, just it was going to match that existing building that is adjacent, but I have no problem revising it to match the monuments at the enclave and move forward with, um, the buildings that were open to building, but then, uh, along ones already there. So we revised them based on the, the comments and the feedback at the, uh, at the work session. So hopefully this is beautiful, which is something that everyone can be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you. What is this signage that will look like?
Uh, we have the building signage, Eric did make a comment to try to, uh, include the wood, you know, there's a, the enclave, there's a wood background. And so what we, we would do is we would, we would use the, the wood very similar to the enclave, the down hall, the monument there, uh, but there's, there's, we, we haven't put in any signs just for the fact that we don't know the size of the, of the tennis space and actually the location of the sign. I was in favor of both signs at the entrance, like whenever we, uh, in we, that's why.
And then, well, the, the other question about signs I had was on the building, I had to even add these and these just to designate the suites, but what was the sign, would you have on building signs as well?
I mean, uh, probably maybe. You know, at the entrance, I'm, I'm afraid of any kind of signs that, you know, the city or seats and, and more.
Any more questions? I'm gonna ask for a motion on the enclave, private commercial architectural design revision.
I make a motion to deny the architectural.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Second. Is there any discussion?
What's the problem with you?
Is there, is there any discussion? Who brought back exactly what y'all asked?
I've had conversation with Mr. Coleman, um, and it's not exactly what I've had in mind, nothing to it's aware of that. But I mean, if everybody else likes it, then we, it's one of the.
For me, Billy, it still just looks like a warehouse rather than what I envisioned for retail or any space, even out on 138.
I think it's gonna look like a warehouse, somebody moves in it.
And also based on the fact that we're looking at trying to do some, some planning, some actual planning in the city with the residents, I want to know what they think, you know? And I haven't found anyone that loves this look. But I want us to have just more information, since we don't have super crack before you start building, I don't see that there's, um, a great problem with holding that up just a little while.
Joe, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
When somebody comes with site plans of what a building is supposed to look like, what is supposed to, what is in our ordinance that is supposed to be brought forth?
You're asking specifically about site plans.
I'm asking about.
Building plans.
About what a, what a building is going to look like, and what are we supposed to be getting up here?
Well, thi- this process is based upon the condition zoning on the original commercial part of the enclave, that an architectural exterior would be approved by the mayor council.
Okay.
So, and there are zoning, general zoning items in the zoning orders that specify what materials are gonna be that the city approved a number of years ago. But other than that, there's no, there's no real guidelines, except in the downtown development, although there are a lot more things in there, but generally, um, when there's not a specific requirement or this says it has to be 70% of this, that, and the other, you haven't really come to this situation yet. So if, if, if that had not been added by the council at the time for anybody, anything in there, then the, the builder would just come and submit permanent drawings and then take the permit, the, the code conditions have been there. So you're asking, and you approved it previously on the gas station. So I mean, they're, they, you have approved the drawing, so. The only other avenue would be to have, uh, you know, developer to come in and request modification on the condition, which then there'd be a process on that. And if you want to see them, then I don't know if you want to have a, uh, another informal sit-down and talk about the style, because I mean, I think that's where, I'll, I'll, I'll hold off on, on, on that discussion. Right now, you've got, that's your reason for having these, having everybody come up to see is because it's a condition zone. Um, unless you change the policy to require future builder, developer to do something differently with the design palette or guideline where they know exactly what they're, we sort of have them, but you don't have them completely, um, I think to your satisfactions.
Mr. Coleman, I think what is going on in, and council members, please correct me if I'm wrong, we have a initiative that's been approved or that we're discussing tonight that, uh, council has preliminarily said, yes, put it for a vote. And the initiative is the envision moment row. And it's something that is inviting in the, the citizens and stakeholders and developers and a gamut of people, um, to be a process to create what it is the citizens of all that want to see, because we can't make those decisions for them until we hear from them. I think the concern is, is that you've heard the, the word warehouse, I've heard the word, um, strip mall. And having this on, out on 138 in front of the subdivision, this is what's welcoming people into our city, and it is, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it is the belief that this is not something that is welcoming, that this, when you look at this, it just looks like a warehouse, it looks like a strip mall, and I understand that there's gonna be shots and whatnot in it, but you have come to us and you have asked us to tell you what will be acceptable, and that's not how this is supposed to work. We're supposed to see your vision, give you suggestions, which we've done, we've given you photos, I've seen other photos that you've shared, and this remains to be one building looking like a strip mall or a warehouse. And I think that is the problem that the council is having with this. If that is not the case, then please clarify that.
I, I think you're right, Mayor, I think the stone and brickwork looks great, but beyond that, I think that is exactly what the issue is, is that it just, it looks too commercial, too industrial, and not like, hey, welcome to Moment Row, and hey, come shop at, um, Walmart.
Also, now you think I'm just the front door to our parkway. And also, when we had this and citizens were here to give their input on it, they liked the pictures that we submitted to you, and that's not what this looks like.
With all due respect, I think Linda's probably hit the nail on the head. This is just a render. This has nothing to do with what the, the whole development's gonna look like. If you look at the site plan, you've got a buckle from 138, you've got landscape buckle between the subdivision and the development, you've got, you know, a, a, a whole approved site plan that shows all of the different things. This is not gonna be on the face of 138, there's a huge setback, this mandate on Highway 138, this is just a render of the building, and the original was just simply based off what was already approved in Act. And, you know, this is a typical commercial building, you asked me to change the rock, the brick, you didn't like the red, but I changed the red to match that. The, the monument, the, how many of you have seen the monument, it's around, does that look good? Or does that look good?
That's great.
That looks great. Well, that's what all of these buildings look like, that's what this looks like.
I think what we need, we're trying to get across is that this is what you presented to us. That, when I listen to you right now, I think, oh, that could be nice. No, that's not this.
That's just a rendering of the building, what's in here.
You've got to show us your plan.
I guess you should have brought the site plan, that, that's not even asked, it, it, it appears, and I hope I'm wrong, but it appears this project's being stonewalled.
Yeah.
And you're talking about sewer capacity, sewer capacity has nothing to do with what we're doing now.
I didn't mean to say consider capacity, I mean a motion based on.
Well, this looks exactly like the, the monument going into the subdivision, which is what we agreed would be acceptable.
This has the same material.
This is the monument going into the subdivision.
Right.
That's in real stuff, and, correct, correct. This has no work on it.
That's the building. And that is the, is nothing but a rendering of, of the actual, you know, the, the building, the four sides of the building, this, this is, you know, it doesn't show the sign, it doesn't show the landscaping, it doesn't show the curb appeal, it doesn't show the buffer along 138 and all of the other thing.
Why not?
Because we're here for an architectural approval, not site plan approval. I already have the permit for this sign, I've had the permit for eight months for this sign. So if I go put wood signs on this, yeah, I just don't know that wood signs.
Same for me, and this is what I have to approve or deny, and so that's.
Well, you, you approve or deny based on the project, I mean, look at the houses out there, look at the entrance out there.
That house is not in brick walls.
No, but they have breaking off accents, and the, uh, and, and the monument has breaking off, and the landscaping in both entrances is, is, uh, very upgrade, you got a fence at the back, you got a fence at the front. So, I mean, I have no problem with giving you what you want, but I understand that this is just an architectural approval for the building. Not for the project.
I understand this is an, this is an approval for the look of the building, and the council has told you on three different occasions that this building looks like a warehouse.
The style. We're not checking the materials, we are, we're being the architect, and I don't like the architect.
Mayor, let's remind you, while you have a motion on the floor, let me make a discussion. The discussion is should be on the motion, it's not, if you want open discussion with advocates and I was just, I, I'm addressing the character, you know, of the sign. Please either pull it off and you open it up for the, what you're having, but right now, you're considering a motion to.
You're right.
The motion was to.
To deny.
To deny the night, which means that if it was denied, he's gotta come back.
Okay.
I'm just, this, so if you're getting way out, I'm getting way out of line, I'm off of the topic, but if you want further discussion, then step back, have a discussion, and then reconsider.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to deny the approval, we have a second. Is there, we've already had discussion. Yeah, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of denying the, uh, drawing or the revision to the approved drawings, please raise your hand.
Hi.
All those against? All right, thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Coleman. Okay, the next thing is the envision moment row, um, proposal with Hall Consulting, we discussed this at our last meeting and talked about it, and everybody thought it was a great idea to go ahead and move forward with it. The envision moment row initiative is something that's going to go on over a period of months, include citizens, stakeholders, developers. It's just gonna be run by Hall Consulting along with members of council and other members from the community. It'll be kicked off with a panel meeting where we'll bring in experts who are working on different projects within the city right now, for instance, the roundabout, the roundabout will bring in somebody who, uh, is the project manager with Jordan DOT, uh, will have somebody from the county to come to the park, we'll have somebody there about the, the sewer expansion, anything else that's going on in the city. And then we've worked over a, a number of months looking at different zoning, um, issues within the city, about planning, about finding out what people want and don't want in the city, and then also, um, working on the downtown overlay and where is placed right now, and is that the best place, et cetera. These are all things that have to be fixed if we're gonna grow in the right way. And so the council said that they would like to have this come to this meeting, uh, to be voted on, and, um, that's what we're doing tonight, as a proposal. So with that being said, I will ask if there is a motion. Go ahead.
I make a motion to, um, move forward and approve, um, envision, the project envision water curve with Hall Consulting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussions?
I have one other one to discuss, but I'm in agreement with this. We also know that the price is approximately $23,000, and that was not budgeted for going to account. How we're going to do that, I don't think we have to do that in the motion, but I do like it as a matter of record. And I would propose, having looked at the budget with this in mind, um, we had set aside, I believe it was last year, maybe the year before, an accommodation there of like $80,000 for Hall Consulting to come in, so that we make a fund balance transfer of $25,000 to accommodate this project.
Great idea. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and put it to a vote, all in favor of moving forward with the envision moment row with Hall and Sony, please raise your hand.
Yes.
Three, and anybody against?
One.
Thank you. Yeah.
No, I wouldn't have said you seconded, so there is a motion.
I'm gonna say I'm not seeing second. There wasn't here, okay. It's same.
Thanks for getting that. Okay. With that being said, we're gonna go ahead and move on, there's no new business tonight? You admitted that, we're gonna go on to the boards and public works. I have the public works report from our public works manager. Um, in the city park, the new basketball poles have gone up, slip and sanitation, dumpster has been removed, it was an eye roller, and we're still hearing, waiting to hear the concrete and what to do with the voting machines. At this point, it's, it's moved all the way up to our, um, Bruce Williamson, he's working on it with us now. Uh, nobody seems to want the machines, but nobody seems to want to give us confirmation, we can go ahead and remove them. We're hoping that, uh, working with the gov, gov dot com, uh, they'll be able to help us out.
I think we've got a letter given permission to do that, I'm a little bit, but, all right, so remind us.
Okay. At the sewer plant, Casey Miller, who we've contracted with, um, he is working on cutting the hang with the weather bedding, and the fill, he filled the lift station with fuel in case of any bad weather that we were supposed to begin with the, uh, the hurricane. We're working with the engineer to repair a few cat spaces that have created sinkholes. That is, um, an underestimation of actually what Brian has been doing with that, so I'm gonna go and split. We brought on our engineer who we hire on a as-needed basis, and he went around the whole city with us for hours, looking at different areas where we're having sinkholes or superdrainage issues. We've filled up holes where it was a danger to citizens, one in every code, and then another one along, um, old 138. Unfortunately, Aaron Montlade, our engineer, he's very knowledgeable about all this stuff, it's not as bad as we thought. We found the reasons for a lot of these sinkholes to why they're appearing, and he's given us solutions to get those fixed, so we're in the process of getting that done. There are a couple of bays that we are going out and looking for some, um, quotes on or some information on, he's gonna be contacting some of his people, of course, which is to be fixed, we'll bring them forward, council. But those things are all looking to. But those things are all looking good, which is a good thing. What else? The streetlights have, some of those have gone out. He's been taking care of that. And he made sure that all the basketball safety lights before schools, were in working work before schools started, just to make sure that we are continuing with our safety needs for us. And on top of that, they're doing the regular business that they do every day in the city. And that's it for that. The city book is our next report. Give it to me.
For our rentals, we have two million rentals, nine ball field for our tickets. We have eighteen county, there is a control. I'm going to read off our accounts evos. Our general account has $518,299.16 in sixty-three cents. Super service district, $17,147.33. Two thousand nineteen swans, $176,196.29. Money market, $739,704.58. And then our sewer money market account, $1,175,356.29.
Thank you. For code enforcement, we actually have Frank Ellington here tonight to give his report. Welcome back, Frank.
Thank you. All right, so this report is going to be for the seven to five level point four through today, April twenty fourth. The code enforcement that I've been able to do face to face for people are giving notices I've issued, twelve notices for vehicles parked in the grass and, you know, not parked on pavement or gravel. Two notices were given for vehicles that were either not running, not tagged, not properly insured, or able to be driven. We did have two also for vehicles that were parked on the street causing a traffic hazard or blocking a city service vehicle. This stems from an issue where parkers, truck and not the car, people on the street, and everybody was, you know, this was a, a couple of them that were, the notices that were written were calls, it was just, it was no way contacted by any, it had to be done that way. So it was a total of sixteen notices that were issued in this period. Several other ongoing issues we are addressing through sending certified letters. That's something that the mayor has decided, you know, and I'm finding that some of these properties, they're actually rural property. So we're finding the owners that are outside of city, we're going to be directing them with letters. So far, everybody responded back. I think things are moving forward, a couple of them, not like, like we want, so some second letters are going to be going out with the deadline. And they're aware of the, it's not resolved and as well, so we're working on things this way. The grass cutting, with the rain, I haven't understand the problem, but the rain is really hard on this something. There's a few that I'm going to have to address that are just, that have been probably cut all summer. But people that just have, you know, the rain is really making it hard to, you know, my grass needs cutting, you know, so that's just, but these other ones are pretty, you know, and a lot of feedback from, a lot more feedback from the citizens than when I was here before. But some of these, and for the most part, it's been, I've been able to, you know, have positive reaction, but that's where we are with that. So if there's any question.
The rural properties, what type of notices have been given to that grass or is there?
One of them is, I ended up with vehicles, there's overall junk accumulation and debris. Another one is a year long home away drainage issue. It's been causing sand and silt to come to our road, and we've actually had used city resources to clean the road. And that issue, that's part of what the mayor, what the homeowner or the landowner said was a problem, we recall is not, because it's not safe. So that's an issue that we're, and that's why we looked into it. It's been happening documented, that we're just not going to keep them to share. So.
And that's the spirit. Yes.
So we're, that's, that's how we're going to try to address some of these problems, you know, instead of just continuing giving notices, if our action gets corrected, ten months later, we're back to the lower. We're just going to try to go, say a little more, all the ones are repeated over and over and over. I've got records that go back years. So that's the good thing, we can go back and, then we can go a little more, a little more forceful with it as far as, not continue.
The gentleman on the eighty-one, is where's that?
That was actually, that was something that was done to the point of when I, prior to my comeback, it got to the point where notices, or the actual citation was issued to appear, or was failure to appear, then you have big reports issued. So by hand, you're forced to put in this, that's in the system. Unless that were called, that's where we are with that.
I'm going to touch with the municipal court, and we'll be. We've got that again. We've got a standing action, if I didn't want to go.
Yeah, there's, and we're identifying some of, you know, some of the, we're hoping we got a different plan, a little bit better plan. For me, the new approach on some things, going forward, it's going to be a little lasting result, I guess, to see what we're trying to get to.
Can you clarify something?
Yes.
You didn't give citations. You gave reminders, warnings, if whatever you want.
Notice is a violation.
Notice is a violation. Those are not citations.
Citations are actually when you're given a court date, a court for judge, and then you have to answer, then that's when the, our city attorney for solicitor, they have to present the case, put in a note, and the city's case, the defendant, then that's, and then the judge makes a decision.
Right.
We've only had to do that, usually, way it's been in the past, somebody will get a second notice before it goes to a citation.
Right.
And in the note, and the notices, the letters that we're sending out is put in, that clearly put in writing, this will result in citations appear in municipal. So it's not just, oh, another one of those. So, and I've done that before in the past, I've had to come here, but luckily, most people comply, you don't have to do that.
Right.
And violations come with a substantial amount of time to remedy the violation.
Right. The way our, the first, the way our notices were written now, as we came, it's two weeks from the time the first one is given, that two weeks to comply, and I've been given a second one, and I'll, the second one, I'll cut it for one. I'm, number one, other than maybe five times, I've had compliance with that method.
Yeah.
When it went to court, we're, and I tell, I said, you know, when we're documenting, we're going to know their rights when we go there, when we go there. And that's, but that's, that's the last thing to worry, they have to, and we're just going to do them. And especially now with some of the home away issues, the home and all of those, you know, where's the breathing?
And those ongoing issues, they're maybe 1% of the.
They're, they're, yeah.
And now what could be?
Ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of them are viable, correct, but the situation with this notice. And all I tell them, that little pink piece of paper really triggers people, we already trained to the color.
Right.
I don't know, it's, it's just a, it's just a piece of paper that says, this is the like thirty-one dash one twenty-nine, this is the one that's violation, we're not making this up, you can look it up, it's just a reminder, this is what you're violating, please practice. I mean, it doesn't use that language, but that's what it's basically saying. It's, it's not.
Right. Oh, yeah. Right.
So something we're going, we're going to handle in my.
Great. Thank you, Eric, for all you do. All right. Matt. Okay, my reporting. There's so much going on, I'm only going to go over a few things. I recently joined the mayor's reading club, it'll be starting that up at the end of August, whenever I get the package. And I spoke with the elementary school about that, and I am putting in my request to be able to be a volunteer. The basketball courts, as we stated, they're back in order, and we'll also be doing a little upkeep on the courts themselves, themselves, when we had that process done to fix them. We're supposed to be updated or looked at every three years and any crack refill, keep them in good condition. City hall will be the next up for getting the roof replaced. We've already done on the auxiliary buildings. And the rest of the big building will be done this weekend, I believe, if we can stay on track with the weather. We have brought on two student employees through the work study program at the high school, two grade students, AP students, ones that's all up there, seem like very nice young lady, going to have to start on Monday. So we're really excited about that, to help out with some of the paperwork and organization that has, that we need to get done. For code enforcement, I'm just going to put this out there. If you're getting a notice of violation, please know it is not a citation the first time around. Please do not chase down the code enforcement officer in your vehicle and demand to know what a letter is all about. Please be respectful, or we will just have to go to go ahead and mailing these things out. I'm not going to put our code enforcement officer in danger or have you have to deal with people who are belligerent. That's just not what we're all about. This is just a notice, and if there's something at my house that is off, he has been authorized, I expect a citation or something. So it's not just a do as I say, do, you know, do as I say, not as I do, if anybody has a violation, if you're parking on your grass, if you don't have the requisite tag put out there in the borders, if you don't have a tag on your car, if you don't have these things, you're filing a notice of violation. That's all there is to it. There's laws that we have to be living within, it is my job to enforce those laws, and I'm not going to be remiss in doing it. Moving on. The little library today was really great. Emily was there with her whole family, we have great pictures, we'll get it out on social media. The city is moving right along at the next work session, there'll be a timeline, more information about the initiative for envision walnut grove, and we'll be keeping, moving in the right direction, and that's all we can do. And it's a, it's a pleasure going into the office every day and talking with a lot of citizens, and people just seem to be stopping in to say hello, which is really nice. So it's, we're doing, we're doing okay, and we'll keep doing it. And I appreciate all you ladies up here and staff. And that's it for me, for my report. Town hall is up for grabs. If anybody has any comments or questions, it's more of an informal kind of situation. Yes, Ms. Ramsey?
Question about the traffic. Eighteen-one. Was one, is anyone talking to GDOT about any common traffic or coming devices? You know where they have those flash lights, you know where the city has forty-five, they drop to thirty-five? I mean, I've seen a truck, two occasions, almost run off the road, coming down off that hill so fast, and a car's in front of it, and it almost hit a camera goal sign.
Yeah.
Right, they're coming all to the back. And they have those portable ones that shouldn't be so high, they might bring one to draw attention to this thirty-five. You know, the speed has dropped from forty-five to thirty-five when that hill.
I have talked to GDOT about that, asking them if they could lower the speed limit earlier, because when you come in and it says thirty-five, that yellow sign is just a, hey, caution, would you please slow down? It's not an actual speed limit of thirty-five. And I've asked, can we change that? And apparently, there's some kind of formula, that there has to be a certain amount of air, of road use area length, where you, when you come into a city, it comes down. But not, that's not to say there's not some things we can't do. We have spoken as council, and when we went to a conference, there are portable signs we can purchase that are very affordable, just a few thousand dollars. And when I say very affordable, I do realize two thousand dollars is still a chunk of money. But it might be good, because it's the type of sign that can be put on, to a sign on the GDOT road with their permission. They said that if you call and talk about these things, we can talk about that. But they're movable signs, and they get locked on, and they actually record activity that you can go to the sheriff's department with and say, hey, we need some more help out here. So that is an option also. This, this safety and security of citizens and the speeding, I can't believe what I see on a daily basis. I know. And people try, I've got a dog that's trying to drive, I'm not going to drive, he didn't want to. We made it a rule that when our son was driving, he had to turn right out of the neighboring other school. I know. It's scary, very scary.
Scary, I just wanted to buy that interest. I didn't want to raise you up, you know, you keep up with everything going on. Right now, I'm a teenager, we're just doing, under the windy.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Is there anybody else who has any comments or questions or anything? We have council comments, we'll go ahead and start with Linda today. Have you done nothing for Linda? Rachel.
I have something. On August seventeenth, which is this Saturday, but next Saturday, Walnut Grove Elementary School PTO is hosting a yard sale. And there will be vendors there selling their wares and food, and we're also have a bake sale. So if you're interested in donating, reach out to me, I'll come and give and take them to the school for you. If you're not interested in donating, but you want to come shop, come shop. Seventeenth of August.
I am very happy with all the projects that are being completed, that just, I'm a very difficult person, so I appreciate being able to see the room at the laundry and the work in the city hall, and even the, we had a, we had a citizen reach out to us about the basketball goals, and it was nice to say, you know, the public works is already on it, we're just making one part, and they were installed within two days, and so I think we're doing a pretty good job, and I am proud of our staff and our council. And thank you all for being here this evening, you being here matters.
Not too much, just glad to see everyone. Bring friend next time.
We don't have an executive session, so I'm going to ask for a motion in, do a adjournment. Is that it?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you all for being here tonight.